Those flickering lights, mom, those little twinkly lights.
Okay.
They 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 glisten.
Yeah.
And I got those.
Great. Did you get outside of Paris or are you just in Paris?
When I, in March, when I went to Paris.
Now, were you just in Paris or did you get outside of Paris?
No, we just went to Paris.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we went one day to Versailles, which is, you know, like.
Okay. Now, you've seen one castle, at least. What'd you think of Versailles? Imagine that'd be boring.
I've been there before. No, I was.
Fine, never been to it.
Never been to France?
I've I've flown through forty, gone a couple times, yeah. Always more interesting place than any that there is.
You should go.
Go.
Don't go between now and the.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lebanon City Council meeting for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. I would ask at this time if you would please rise and with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. This evening, we come to you asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we start this meeting. Be with our elected officials as they engage in meaningful discussion to evaluate the items that come before them. Help them to make decisions that not benefit just a few, but are best for the majority. We pray for those who place their lives in danger to serve in the military so that we may have freedom. Bless them and their families for the selfless acts they perform in our time of need. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Sheriff, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. Pedro?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Wark?
Here.
Here. You've all received the minutes for July twenty-fourth. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as distributed. You've also received the budget report for January first through July thirty-first. And Mayor, if you could give us an update, update where we stand there?
Sure. With more than fifty-eight percent of the year completed, our revenues are more than seventy-four percent, and our expenditures are around forty-three percent. So our performance is better than budget in both categories.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from council? And from anyone in attendance? All right. Moving on tonight, we have two items under communications. The first, from Mayor Sherry Capello informing council of the reappointment of Vincent Garcia of the City of Lebanon Design Review Board for a five-year term effective retroactively to July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Mayor, if you could.
Sure. So this is Vin's first reappointment. The Design Review Board came out of our new zoning ordinance that we adopted in June of twenty twenty. We did have a policy prior to that, but this set the requirements for murals and street art in ordinance format. Vin is a member of the CLA, a Lebanon Foundation organization, as a board member. He's a CPA, and he began his professional career in nineteen ninety-two and is now a principal at Garcia, Garmin, and Shea. He has been a great volunteer for the downtown and our community as a whole, and loves the arts, and is why he's agreed to serve another term.
I I sit on that board with Vince, and good man, good to have him. We appreciate his service there. Any questions from council? Okay. Moving on to our second item under communications. Mayor Sherry Capello informing council of the appointment of Courtney Ryman to the City of Lebanon Design Review Board for a five-year term effective retroactively to July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Mayor?
So Courtney is a Secretary for Lebanon Valley Council on the Arts, and the ordinance requires that we have one representative from the Council of Arts on the Design Review Board. In her youth, she was involved with the Envirothon, which taught her to respect, conserve, and appreciate natural resources and the environment. She's a land protection director for the Conservancy, but she's also an artist as well.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate, again, Courtney's helping out on that board. And do we have any questions from council? Tonight, we have remarks from Mike Roof, and Mike's with the Rescue Hose Fire Company number four, and this is on the release of funds for the purchase of the new fire truck. Mike? And that is just going there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They've all been pretty brief.
Mike, if you could state your name and your address, please. Is that a one?
My name is Michael Roof. I'm the president of the Rescue Hose Company number four, four hundred Lehman Street. I'm here representing the fire company and their members as their executive office officer. I have a simple statement to read to city council concerning the releasing of the funds for the purchase of the new ladder truck as stated. Joe, I would like to thank you and council on behalf of the leaders and the members of the Rescue Hose Company number four for this body's best interests and concerns for resolution number twenty-two made last July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two concerning the joint effort between our volunteer fire company and the City of Lebanon for the purchase of a new piece of apparatus slated to serve the city and its constituents for years to come. Unfortunately, I find myself in front of this body at this time with the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars not being turned over to the fire company to date. There was certainly a delay in the process due to COVID concerns, supply chain issues, as well as the need to plan and order an engine for the city as well, extending the process into twenty twenty-three, which is fully understood. Moving forward to March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, there was a meeting between the mayor's office and the Rescue Hose Company to which there was an expedient process to finalize specifications, advertising for the bid process, accepting and reviewing bids, and awarding a contract. Pretty much all of the accomplishments in a short period of time due to the efforts of many prior to the start of this critical process. Mission accomplished, at the mayor's request, having a contract signed by April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. As we all should know by now, part of the process mentioned above was for the city to reach an agreement written out in the form of a memorandum of understanding between both parties, being the City of Lebanon and the Rescue Hose Company, listing reporting requirements concerning local, state, and federal responsibilities. Expectations of duties and responsibilities to be executed by both parties concerning all phases of planning, preparation, for pre-building, meetings, and payment, pretty much relieving the city from effort and expenses that may occur. On April twenty-seventh, the mayor, who serves as the chief executive administrator officer, and Michael Roof as chief executive officer for the Rescue Hose Company, signed the above-said documentation called the MOU, locking the hose, the Rescue Hose Company into a contract with Fireline Equipment, moving forward with the responsibility of payment of one million three hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred and nine dollars. I find it disheartening that the funds were not relinquished to the Rescue Hose Company immediately following the seven-to-fourteen-day process period as agreed upon by the chief executive administrative officer, Mary Sher, yeah, Mayor Sherry Capello, to process the check. Also, to date, Mayor Capello considers the MOU to be invalid as she expresses it was not fully executed and delivered. On April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, the remaining duty to be executed laid in the hands of the chief executive and administrative officer. The Rescue Hose Company had only expectations of picking up a check and are completed MOU in seven to fourteen days. With that being said, that's pretty much my presentation to you, city council, on the, on your board and inside of things. I also supplied a list of communications between the city and myself as the president of the fire company, and really would appreciate and look forward to some sort of resolution to having this funding turned over to the fire company as soon as possible.
Mike, I understand the the MOU was signed by the two of you, but it was not signed by a third individual, so it was not an actual binding contract.
And the executive officer of the City of Lebanon?
Again, but.
Failed to do duties?
How can we, how can we get past this? How can we, how can we get this, this check released and and?
That we do.
Okay.
The the gravest issue I have at this point is I need some assurances that a resolution, a resolution will be able to be reached.
Okay.
And at this point, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
So nonetheless, I felt it was my duty to report to city council, only my side of the story as to where and why this isn't completed yet.
I'll open the floor up to council. Or Mayor, I don't know if you would like?
I have, I can, I have a prepared statement as well. So I just want to thank you, Mike, for sharing your concerns. And as I had communicated with you on a few occasions, all of our volunteer organizations play an important and vital role in fire protection in the city. And I think I can state for all of us that the City of Lebanon respects the role of the volunteers, and we want this purchase to move forward. If I wasn't supportive of the Rescue Hose Company, I would not have recommended to city council the request to exceed the twenty-five percent contribution limit set by city ordinance. City council waived their ordinance and agreed to allow a forty-six percent contribution towards the new ladder truck. I'm not aware that the city has ever contributed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a piece of apparatus, and I guess I'm a little perplexed at the stance that you're taking for a requirement that's been a past practice in the City of Lebanon with the volunteer fire companies when it comes to the use of federal monies. The first example I was involved in was with the Goodwill Fire Engine and Hose Company number five. In a letter dated August ninth, twenty-ten, from the Goodwill secretary, the city, and this is a quote, relinquished the obligation of the twenty-five percent for the sale of the nineteen eighty-two Seagraves truck. At that time, the city, back in nineteen eighty-two, had given twenty-five percent of the funding. I can also add that one of your members' handwriting is on the bottom of the letter, which confirms his knowledge of this requirement. The requirement to pay back the twenty-five percent is a federal requirement when utilizing HUD federal monies. The city greatly appreciates the monies we have received from the federal government through the Department of Treasury. However, in an effort to get the money distributed quickly to the local governments, the guidance was issued almost after the fact, and it keeps changing, with the latest changes just issued last week. We know and understand the federal guidance through HUD, and whenever an issue has been silent with the American Rescue Fund money, we have utilized HUD standards for our protection. It is correct that the initial agreement was issued with this requirement stated in writing. However, upon the legal advice of the city solicitor, there needs to be offer, consideration, and acceptance for an agreement to be valid and binding. The city has not completed acceptance because we have not delivered a signed contract to you or the money to you. Again, we want to move forward with this, but I need to protect the city's investment. I guess I would have to ask why you are fighting the addition of this language. If you would be in a position to sell the apparatus at some point in time, why would you expect to receive the percentage of funding that was provided by the city? Doesn't that seem a little unfair? Additionally, it is typical to pay for a vehicle upon receipt of the vehicle. The city was agreeing to pay upfront so the rescue could earn interest on prepaying, which ultimately would lower your cost. Yes, it is correct that the condition concerning potential reimbursement of the city's percentage was only brought to light after an incident that occurred on May fifth with one of your volunteers. That's what made me realize that this past practice should be in writing for the city's protection with such a significant investment. Members of the Rescue Fire Company should also be aware of this requirement in case none of us are around when the truck may possibly be sold. Isn't it better to know upfront? I can share with you that I have seen a few past gentleman agreements, meaning not in writing, where the city was on the losing end. Initially, I had added two conditions. One involved appropriate notification for taking a piece of apparatus out of service by the volunteer company referencing the chain of command. Typically, the paid fire chief is involved in that decision-making of moving of apparatus. And I later met with you, and I agreed that that had nothing to do with this agreement. And in my opinion, I was acting out of emotions, and so I said, let's compromise. I'll take that condition out. I just simply cannot agree to remove the reimbursement portion. I'm assuming that you're here tonight and that your company was not in agreement with my compromise, or you said you were going to take it back to your company, and I haven't heard since. It's one of my duties to protect the city, and again, all I'm asking for is language to be added to the agreement that if the ladder truck is sold, that forty-six percent of the selling price be returned to the city unless we waive it. And what we would do is we would contact the feds, in this case, the Department of Treasury, and we would ask them, and if they would say, no, it does not need to be returned back to the Department of Treasury, then we could waive it, if that is what city council and the mayor at the time would want to do. And again, this is something that HUD requires, that's federal money.
Not ARPA money.
Excuse me?
Not ARPA money. You said federal money for for.
I'm saying that HUD is, it requires the same percentage of monies to be returned to the city or to HUD if the item funded is sold or transferred. Typically, if it's at least ten years or so, they will waive it, but it's on a case-by-case basis, and we have to contact them. And again, the conditions for the American Rescue Fund money is not going through HUD, but rather the Department of Treasury. This money was provided to the residents of the City of Lebanon, and the city wants to make sure that the money stays here. All of the other American Rescue Fund monies the city is providing to nonprofits is for services going specifically to city residents or for improvements to buildings or properties that are located in the city. If a property is sold, the improvement would remain with the building, which, again, is located in the city. A ladder truck, if sold, could go to another state, and most definitely out of our county, out of our city, and that is not what the money was intended for. It was for stimulus and is to be stimulus for the City of Lebanon. And I, I'm gonna be blunt. I just, I feel like, you know, we want this to happen, Mike. It just feels like it's.
I take offense to using words like I am fighting with the city over this issue. The, the, could you explain fighting? How am I fighting with the city?
I'm not.
Was that in your prepared statement? You don't understand why I'm fighting this?
Did I say that?
If you would afford me a copy of your statement, I could possibly read it.
I don't think I said.
Second, Mike, I know you and I have have gone back and forth about this.
Secondly, this all has started how many months ago? We are three and a half months into this?
Well, on April twenty-sixth, we told you that the bid was received, and in our opinion, all required documents were submitted. On four twenty-seven, you brought a signed agreement in. The city clerk was not here until the following week. An incident occurred on five-five, made us think that we needed to add language to bring this to light when this is a federal requirement that we believe needs to be followed. We believe we're required to follow that.
So your whole initial, initial basis on this concern jet was generated from an incident that happened on May fifth, which you agreed to take out of the terminology and the simple verbiage to be added.
But it made us think, gee, what else could happen? And that's when we realized, you know, we should let the fire company know upfront that if they sell it, twenty-five percent has to be returned to the city unless it's waived. It's something as simple as that, and in my opinion, you're getting.
Twenty-five percent or forty-six percent, Mayor?
Excuse me?
Is it twenty-five percent or forty-six percent?
I'm sorry, in the past, it's been, it's whatever the percentage of the funding is. In your case, it's forty-six point seven percent.
Mr. Roof?
Yes, sir.
I guess my question here, and I understand that, I don't think anybody's happy about the holdup in this process. What's the core issue here? Like, what is, what is your reservation about the, the change in the language? I guess that's what I'm not understanding. Like, I understand from hearing the mayor speak and from reading some of this documentation, I, I understand the purpose of the addition of that language. Let's just say you, you would, I don't know, two years go by, you decide to sell this, this ladder truck for whatever reason. I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding what your concern would be with having to return funds that aren't yours to begin with. What's, what's your concern?
They're not the city's to begin with. They're federal funds provided to the city for the people.
Certainly, but they're far more the city's than yours.
And if, if, if we want to be blunt, I take offense. So, under principle, the Rescue Hose Company sat down with the City of Lebanon. We agreed to sign an MOU, which now is saying is not valid. The bottom line is, the Rescue Hose Company is on the hook for one point, almost four million dollars with every passing day.
Sign the agreement, Mike.
We are losing.
Sign the agreement.
Interest.
Sign the MOU.
It's a matter of principle, Joe. We had an MOU signed.
You told me about my principle, and you, you weren't really happy with it.
Excuse me?
When your, your text to me, when you got personal with me, and then I had to wait two weeks till you, till you called me back. As a veteran, you couldn't believe.
Now it sounds like, now it signs like a fight.
No, your words, not mine, my friend.
Well, you're right, I did send that to you, Joe.
I'm, I'm an elected council person here, right? I've spoken to people about this. They said, well, of course, why wouldn't the city want to make sure that their best interests are taken care of? I, I don't think there's anything unreasonable to be asked for.
In any response.
It was not a legal document.
Well, if it's not a legal document, why does it matter?
Why won't you sign this?
If it's not a legal document, Joe, why does it matter? In every response to the City of Lebanon?
Mike.
Please reach out to me, I'm willing to discuss things.
I know, I spoke to you twice on the phone. I gave you probably an hour of my time.
You're right, you did, and where did they get me?
Pardon me?
Where did they get us? Here I am in front of city council.
Well, I know from the first time to the second time that I spoke to you, the mayor took one item out of that MOU to come to the center. And now you're, you're telling me the only reason you're not going to sign this is because of principle? She answers to citizens of this, this city, as do the five of us. And I don't, I can't speak for the five, but I can tell you, I'll bet you, they would agree with the mayor. We have to look out for the best interests of the city. I think that's all we're doing. This has nothing to do with Mike Roof or the union.
You're right, it doesn't, it has everything to do with the Rescue Hose Company.
With the volunteer firemen in this, or in this city.
Does it hurt you by adding that condition? How does it hurt you, Mike? Did you ever hear the phrase, cut off your nose to spite your face? That's what it seems like.
Is that where we really want to get down to?
How does this hurt you?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I didn't get an actual answer to my question, and, and that's actually what I'm after. I'm, I'm missing the boat why this is a problem. Because if, if this gets executed in its present fashion, the problem is if you sell that, the citizens of this city are missing a significant amount of money that they shouldn't be missing, okay? It is, it is the citizens of this city's money, not yours, Mr. Roof. So if, if we add this language, okay? What harm does that do to you and your company? That's, that's what I want to know, because I understand that you need to protect your company. I get that, hundred percent, and I appreciate you being here to voice this concern. But what, what is the situation that you are trying to prevent from recurring? That's what I need to know.
A document that is now considered not to be legal?
No, 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 no.
Or a document that was entered into an agreement with the fire company and the City of Lebanon.
And, and it's my understanding, I mean, the, the, the city, the city has a requirement to provide fire protection for its citizens.
Absolutely.
I, I think we can all agree to that, and that, that's, at the end of the day, what this is about. You know, I, I would like to think that, you know, those who voted to, to throw the ordinance to the wind and provide you three hundred thousand dollars that you didn't deserve.
I believe it was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
An extra, an extra three hundred thousand.
So if, if the city thinks we didn't deserve it, then why did they do it to be?
Well, I, I understand that what I'm, what I'm getting after here is, you know, the city gave you a significantly higher amount of money than, than would have been required. So all that we're asking for return is some protection if.
Let me ask you another question. If there was another fire company in the City of Lebanon that went through a similar purchase process, do you have a signed MOU with the same language in it?
So I will speak to that. So there is another company, the Union Fire Company. I went to one of their meetings, and I explained the situation, and I asked them if they would sign a revised agreement, adding, at that time, the two conditions. They voted, and they voted to agree to put, add the two conditions in and revise their agreement. However, they wanted time to look over the agreement because it was just thrown at them at the last minute. They didn't have prior knowledge to review the agreement, and I said, absolutely, of course. They didn't meet over the summer, their only meeting, I believe, in September. And so when they meet, they, it's my understanding that they will sign it because they've already voted to add the conditions in, which at this point, you know, I really am just interested in the one condition.
So moving forward, Mayor, you would have the same MOU for any other company?
See, it, it's not, it's not like we go out and buy these pieces of apparatus every week, okay? And there's only been, I believe, two occasions where we used federal money. And I do have a copy of a letter, which I had hinted at earlier, where the Goodwill had acknowledged that twenty-five percent, and the city was waiving it. So it was like a record, and that was back in August of twenty-ten, shortly after I was mayor, when we did some maneuvering of equipment and new purchases and things. And then the union is getting CDBG and ARPA money, so that's definitely a requirement there. But they, they agreed. I mean, we had a discussion, and we went back and forth, and I explained it, and they accepted it.
Is there a unit in service right now that this is replacing, or is this filling a void?
No, it's gonna be a new replacement for the yellow banana truck twenty.
Okay. And that is being replaced because it is at its end of serviceable life?
It's coming to the end, yes.
I'm glad the mayors are very knowledgeable on my fire apparatus.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The truck is not at the, the end of its service life yet. It is in service for almost twenty years. We've had equipment up to thirty years. This current truck was purchased with zero city dollars. Prior to that, I don't think the city, the nineteen seventy-six Ward de France, the city provided twenty-five percent funding if it was that much. Obviously, dollar amounts have been increasing greatly since then. The, 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 the crux of the problem and the bluntness here is there was an agreement signed by the executive person in the City of Lebanon and the executive officer of the Rescue Hose Company. Now, we can say the first agreement was taken out, and let's not even speak of it. I take great offense to the first grievance and simple verbiage that the mayor wanted to add to begin with. And her response, if we look through email chains, was, oh, I have another set of simple verbiage I'd like to add because I thought of something else. And I, I fail to understand how the City of Lebanon can go three months, two and a half months, whatever, with zero communication to a valued volunteer fire company.
I don't agree with that, Mike. I have the dates, and I got back to you the next day every time you emailed me. And then the last time I emailed you was five eighteen, and it took you till seven thirteen to respond to me, two months later. And at that point, then, you started to involve Counselor Morales, and he was coming to me for information, and we were going back and forth. and he was coming to me for information, and we were going back and forth, and he was contacting you until we spoke.
So July the 13th, I reached out to the City of Lebanon, inquiring what was going on, and heard nothing back. It was my responsibility to reach out to you after I sent the message?
I just explained to you what was going on. But in my opinion, every time you emailed me, with the exception of one time, after I didn't hear from you for two months, I got back to you the next day.
If I may.
We can have this discussion in your office if you'd like.
Mike, if the city, if the city wouldn't be fronting $650,000, would you be delaying the purchase of this truck? Where would you be getting the funds for this truck? What would your plan be?
The city would not be receiving a new ladder truck to be used at their benefit.
Okay. But we already have one that works just fine, is what I understand.
Absolutely. I don't know what the life expectancy is going to be.
Okay. And if that would.
The other truck across town, which is vital in this, is older than ours.
And if that truck would fail, and we were missing a ladder truck, we should tell them that there's no ladder truck because of disagreement on principle? Is that what I'm understanding?
It's amazing how things can just be twisted.
That's an honest question.
So an honest question is, it's a simple matter, turn the check over. And an already signed MOU, and we can continue to have discussions otherwise on this.
And you can also sign the MOU. So any other questions from council?
Okay, I was just made aware of this situation and this amount of detail today.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
Well, I mean, this is a lot of detail. So like, I was aware of the, obviously, of the $650,000, $650,000, sorry. I guess, like, where, what I'm thinking is, from the city's perspective, that language should have been incorporated initially as far as the repayment, if anything, is done with the piece of equipment in the future. The reason why it wasn't, I think it was probably an oversight, or it wasn't thought of, or because the funding came from a different federal entity. But I don't understand, and did you take this to your board about including this language in the memorandum?
I did.
And they rejected it?
And I am here speaking because there were two original sets of verbiage that were refused to be budged on. And on an impromptu meeting with Mayor Capello, as I stood in the lobby of this building, we had further discussion, and she agreed to take the first set of verbiage out. Her initial verbiage of area of concern, she's willing to take out, but she's not willing to budge on the second one. And I've gone from past practices, I've gone to, "It's got to be there because of block grant money," I've gone through, "It's the law." Nobody can prove or show me a law. And if we have a verbal commitment, that new documentation will be signed by another fire company across town? Is that in hand and the done deal? I understand it was agreed upon. I had an agreement. I'm totally of the opinion, had we reached seven to 14 days after that MOU was signed, and that check was turned over, this could be a whole different conversation and probably not even have to happen.
No, I understand that. And, you know, and I appreciate that there was an initial agreement. I guess I'm, you know, I'm just thinking that it's adding the language that if you should dispose of the piece of equipment, that whatever the city contributed as a percentage should be returned to the city. And if the federal government requires that money back, then we're just kind of a pass-through here. And again, the city doesn't have to take it, but they should have the, essentially, the right of first refusal, is how I see that, because then the money can be used elsewhere within the city.
I could agree with that. The company may agree with that. However, now I'm sitting here saying past practices and other deals that were made, how was something like that overlooked? Because now we have knowledge of.
Can't answer, but it just.
And things change. Things change.
Sense, though. And that's, I.
So there's a couple of things here.
Maybe some feathers are ruffled, but it could be an easy solution.
It could turn the check over.
And you could.
I can take the same stance that the city takes.
The city just wants to reassure me that the money will stay within the city and benefit the city.
In 130 years, the fire company has never sold something for a profit.
And you may not be here in 10 years, and I probably will not be here in 10 years. That's right. And that's why it should be in writing. And it has been, yes, absolutely.
$2.4 million. And the extensive reality of that is, if that contract gets canceled, we're probably looking at $50,000, $60,000 that the Rescue Hose Company is out of because the mayor takes the same stance of, "It's simple, just sign it." And I take the same stance of, "It's simple, just turn the funding over." And I'm still willing to discuss moving past that, stated clearly throughout.
Well, I think we've taken this round and round, and I appreciate the fact that you are meeting with Donna tomorrow, I understand? For the mayor and the mayor?
Donna and the mayor.
So hopefully, maybe we can come to some agreement.
Well, I certainly hope so.
Mr. Roof, thank you.
I hope so, too.
Me, too. I believe this is all.
You can let it all, Mike. Thank you. All right, that completes our formal agenda this evening. At this time, I'll open it up to council. Mr. Chairman. Richard?
Last Wednesday, I wanted to thank the city highway department for their assistance in removing the bell from in front of the London County Historical Society and storing it. I knew it presented a great challenge, but they did a wonderful job. I just wish you could pass that along.
I will do so.
I just wanted to state that publicly. Also, I know you just had South, or 12th Street repaved sections of it. There is a section from the, on South 12th Street, the rail trail to Oak Street. It's like driving across the tundra.
Yeah. That's going to be redone.
Okay.
So we're replacing a catch basin, and the Jubilee's going to be reimbursing for the curb work that needs to be done, and then it'll be paid.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chad.
Anyone else on council? And I'll follow Richard in thanking the city. On Friday, we were able to pour cement on six of the tee pads for the disc golf course out at Coleman Memorial Park. And the mayor sent some of that from the maintenance.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Highway Garage.
We had a good group there, Arthur Funken's sons, a lot of volunteers, and we were able to get six five-by-12-foot cement pads poured and finished and roughed. So that's six of the 18 on that new course. So, Mayor, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Joe, can I just ask, do you guys have a projected date when you're going to be opening that section, or, I guess, the course?
Well, we're hoping in the next two months that we'll have a ribbon cutting on the course, so.
We'll be watching for it.
I will let everyone know. Also, Donna, I don't know if you had any luck with our address change. Richard leading.
Cherry, Cherry Street.
Cherry Street.
And someone from this, one of the employees from the city had talked to the post office, and they said they are the ones that make that determination. I have tried to confirm that with the post office. Many calls to the, and I am a supporter of the post office, let me just say that, having a brother working for the post office. So this is not, I'm not disparaging the post office. Many phone calls to the Lebanon Post Office, that no one answers the phone, which is interesting. Then I sent a letter to the postmaster of the Lebanon Post Office, and it was returned, which, again, and my next step, and I said I was going to do it last week, and I did not, I am actually going to physically go to the post office and see if I can speak with someone. So, and I did tell the attorney that's representing the property owners of Cherry that the letter was returned. And I will do that this week, because we do need to get that resolved, but those, yeah, no luck.
Okay. And with that, I will open the floor up to, or questions from the press?
Chris Coyle from Leb Town. Would I be permitted to ask a couple procedural questions about the rescue issue? Not policy or argumentative questions here. First of all, I believe you said, Mr. Morales, that there was a memorandum of agreement that was signed by the mayor and some representative of the rescue, but the city does not consider that yet legally binding. And I thought I heard you say something about a third signature is needed. Did I understand?
So could I just say something, and it's up to you, Mr. Chairman? But we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I think both sides want to get to the same point. And I was hoping maybe we didn't have all that we did tonight, but it's up to you. But it seems to me that we should try to maybe not keep going on.
Will this be a public meeting tomorrow?
That will not be a public.
Then I'd like to just ask that question. And the other question I have is, just so I'm understanding, so I can report to our readers accurately, is the city now asking for one additional provision in this agreement, which, as I understand it, is, should this new fire truck be sold somewhere down the line, the amount of funds, are these, are these ARPA funds? Am I?
Yes.
Okay. The amount of ARPA funds that the city passes through to the rescue would have to be returned to the city out of the sale proceeds unless it's waived?
Correct. And it would be a percentage of what the sales price is. So it's 46.7% is what the city is funding of the purchase. So if they sold it for $100,000, it would be 46.7% of $100,000.
And to answer your first question, Chris, it's the city's position, we didn't have a contract. We did not have a contract, and so that's where we are with that.
I'm asking why? I'm hearing that both sides put their signatures.
No, it not, it doesn't have to do with the third signature. There's multiple things involved. There was no signed contract. Rescue doesn't have a signed contract. We didn't get to that point.
Signed by somebody from Rescue?
Rescue does not have a copy of the agreement, where there was never, an agreement was not reached.
Okay. I'm asking a narrow question here, because I thought I heard somebody say that this MOU that, whether.
So.
Signed by somebody from the city and by someone from Rescue. I'm just asking whether the signatures were put.
So you and I both know, because this is our business.
No, it's not my business anymore.
It was, and there certainly can be disagreements. So right now, it's the city's position, we do not have a contract. And Mike and I have talked about that.
So the signatures from the city and the rescue were affixed to some document, but the city intends that that is not sufficient to make it a binding contract?
I don't even know, I personally, because I wasn't involved in that beginning part, I'm not sure where signatures were put. I can just tell you, as a solicitor, and that's where we're going to be tonight, the city's position is, we don't have a contract. We want to.
I understand. I understand. And I understand that you can have two signatures on a document that could still not be binding. I understand that. I was a lawyer at one time. I understand.
You aren't anymore, you said.
I've clearly heard somebody from Rescue say that Rescue signed some document, and I thought I heard somebody say that the mayor signed a document. I just want to know if that's correct, whether this, and that the city still considers it not a valid contract.
I'm not even certain of those facts, and that's what we're going to try to flush out.
But I know I did say that.
So we don't, but we don't have a contract, is the city's position.
Both parties have signed, but the city.
Sure that.
But the city's, well, no. I'm just asking, Mayor, did you sign it?
I signed it.
Okay.
But on advice from our city solicitor, there needs to be offer, consideration, and acceptance. And that's why we believe we don't have a contract or an agreement.
Laura Laboe, WLBR and Froggy Valley, 100.1. I guess my question is, and Councilman Miller alluded to it, Mayor, you've alluded to it, I think Chairman Morales you too. And Mr. Roof said something at the very end of his commentary that, you know, the rescue's been around for 130 years and has never sold a piece of apparatus. Why would you be so concerned that all of a sudden now, with a brand spanking new ladder truck that they hope to purchase or hope to take delivery of, that they're going to, two years down the line, sell it?
I mean, I don't, I don't think that they're going to. I mean, that's not, I don't think anybody up here thinks that. I think it's just a protection.
Protection.
For the city. And if it wasn't in agreements in the past, I think it should be in agreements moving forward. I think it's that simple. To me, it's kind of common sense. We should protect ourselves. And again, I said this a few times tonight. I know the mayor has inherited a few situations where there was actual handshakes between, for agreements that have come back to haunt the city. And we, we would not be managing the city if we didn't try and stop that sort of procedure in the future.
All of our other agreements with the ARPA funding were for city services or city residents, which, once those are expended, it's done, like counseling or, you know, money for a camp or something, or the sidewalk project. The sidewalks are improved, it stays with the property, the property's located in the City of Lebanon. Improvements to a building. The union and the Rescue Fire Company's are vehicles, and they can be driven away. They can be sold away and not remain in the City of Lebanon. I'm just going to be blunt and transparent. We didn't think of it until it, like, hit us, and we're like, wow, this is a lot of money. We need to protect the city, regardless of who it is. We approached the union, and they actually, you know, their agreement was signed last fall. And at their meeting, they discussed it, they voted, and I have no reason to believe that they won't sign it at their next meeting. And if they won't, then I'll talk to them again.
So if this.
But it's just the timing of it was, the check wasn't given yet, and I thought it was something pretty, shouldn't be a big deal. I don't know. I mean, I'm sorry it wasn't included.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but at the same time, I think Mr. Roof also said something about getting the money, if only to deposit it and start earning interest to lessen their ultimate amount that they would have to pay out of pocket.
And typically, that doesn't happen. Typically, when you purchase a vehicle, you pay for it when it arrives and you get the certificate of origin. This was a way to, like, an added bonus to help them earn interest, the fire line, to earn interest on it and to help cut down on the payment. We would love for that to happen, but at the same time, I have a responsibility to the citizens of Lebanon, and it's a lot of money. And we're not talking about $65,000, we're talking about $650,000.
So when, should the meeting resolve the issue between both sides, and this order goes through to the engine maker, or the ladder maker, when that truck is delivered, the rescue is going to give them 1.00 practically $4 million, or only the $650,000 that, and then they're going to pay off the remainder?
I don't want to speak for the rescue and how they're handling that.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry, Alice Ramina of KBO News. I have just two small questions. There's been a back and forth regarding whether this is ARPA money or CBDG money. Is it both? Is it a combination, or just a hide money?
For the rescue, it is totally American Rescue Fund money.
Okay.
And what I was explaining earlier, and maybe I didn't do a very good job of it, when the American Rescue Fund monies were first distributed, the guidelines kind of. when the American Rescue Fund monies were first distributed, the guidelines kind of, we got the money, the guidelines came out, they've changed several times since the money was receiveded. There were some things that were not addressed. We know for a fact that with our CDBG money, which is federal money issued through HUD, that there is this requirement, and it's almost on a case-by-case basis, like, whenever we've had this situation in the past, we will call them and say, must this money be returned to you as program income, or may we keep it? And if they say, nope, you can keep it, then in the past, what we've done on at least two occasions is, we've waived the requirement, like, the situation with the goodwill in 2010, we waived the requirement for them to reimburse the city 25% of the sale price. I would expect that if this goes out a long period of time, that whoever's in charge and sitting at this table would most likely do the same thing. But because it's such a huge amount of money, you know, our volunteers, unfortunately and regrettably, all over our nation are dwindling. Most of our volunteer fire companies have two, three, four, five members on their board, that's it. You know, we don't know if something will happen to someone the following year, or whenever, and maybe they won't be able to make good on their loan, maybe they decide they want to go out of the fire company business. Yes, they've been in business, I believe, he said, for 130 years, that doesn't mean they're going to last another 130 years, or even 20 years. We don't know. All I'm asking for is for the city of Lebanon residents to have a little assurance that if something would happen, and this gets sold, that this comes back. So it's not only a past practice, but it is a federal requirement with HUD, and anything that is quiet in the guidance from the Department of Treasury with American Rescue Fund money, we have used our HUD guidelines because we know those are federal monies, and that's a true and sound system that's been tested and run for many, many, many years. American Rescue Fund money is a once-and-done thing. So, anything that we question, that we can't get an answer on, or we don't read, we're following HUD requirements, because that way we feel that's the safest thing. We didn't think of it because it wasn't right in front of us. I regret that. We all make mistakes. I made a mistake. I'm trying to correct it. I didn't think it was such a big deal. I mean, why wouldn't you want to protect your citizens that you serve? Why is this such a big deal? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm asking for us to come together, we want this to happen. I have this stinking check written since May 18th, waiting to give to you, but I need protection for the citizens of this city. This is money that is to come here and stay here. Sorry.
Any other questions, Alashar?
I can send it in an email. It's not important.
Floor is yours, my friend. You're good?
It would just, so, the return on, just whatever percentage of investment, that would specifically be for sale, so if, for whatever reason, the truck were.
Or if they traded it in.
Or if they traded it in. So if, for whatever reason, the truck was damaged or somehow stolen, the fire company would not owe the city anything?
Well, we would.
This is, in theory, obviously, a contract. Some agreement has to be signed out.
Someone doesn't steal the fire truck.
Damage is probably more likely.
Yeah. So we have insurance, you know, the city has insurance. Yeah, I didn't even give that a thought. Thanks, Alashar. Now I'll stay awake worrying about that, too.
At this time, I'll open the floor to city residents, if there are any issues or concerns they'd like to bring forward. If you could approach the microphone and state your name and address there. Press and hold.
Button on top.
Press and hold a little bit. Could come on. Might have to switch it out.
There we go. Great. Thank you, Chairman. Two questions.
Name, address, sir.
Darrell Cox, 492 North Sixth Street. Karen, Councilman Hades, I was, I was taken back when you said that this was the first time that you heard about the Rescue, this issue that you have. Is this the first time you heard about this?
In this level of detail, yes.
In that, but you've heard about it before this, though?
Yes.
You've been in communication with the rest of council and the mayor around this whole issue?
In this detail.
Why? And I'm not going to get into a councilman, I was just, I was just curious why you didn't know anything. Two, I think that.
Darrell, can she answer, please?
Can I answer?
You did, you said you didn't know.
Because this is a straighted, it's a straighted function.
Well, I, you know, Councilman, I.
Hold on, Darrell, let me, let me.
I mean, I'm trying to every single thing that goes.
You should be.
Not on a day-to-day basis.
Karen, if I may, and what happens usually when, because you've done this job, I and myself with the vice chair meet with the mayor.
That's why I'm asking. I know Mr. Works, I know Mr. Works knew everything that was going on.
We meet with the mayor before pre-council, these items are discussed, the mayor got all of the information together on this, which is probably a packet as, as large as this, that was sent out to council. Okay? She does that before the actual Monday meeting, so we all receive that information.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, because I would think.
I'm glad you know that's how.
Something as important as this should, should be.
Yes.
To, you know, to all the council members.
I'm glad you know what.
Two, I want to just publicly thank Chris and Laura for, when I was here in June and talked about the streets and the signage and everything, once we got through that, with Laura's show and with Chris's publications, I saw a really big increase in signage in the city, and that was a really big help with signs, turn here, detour, so that was a big help. Laura, Chris, thank you, thank you very much for that. Finally, Mayor, this, this, this project that we have going on with the sidewalks, where is that, where did that money come from?
American Rescue Fund money and $100,000 grant.
And 100, okay. Are any of the homeowners, or any of the businesses from Fourth Street up to 12th Street, are they, are they paying for any of this new curbs, or new sidewalks, or anything?
Only if they ask for additional work. So, the Stites Club wanted to have stamped concrete because they had a brick sidewalk, so they paid for the difference, and there was a homeowner that wanted a new stoop because it had deteriorated and actually wasn't, didn't comply with codes, so they paid for a new concrete stoop. And then there may be a couple of basements that have some unique situations where they may have to pay for a portion of a wall because there was a basement under.
If they didn't want anything extra, everybody got new sidewalks and new curbing all the way up through, didn't matter if you were a homeowner, if it was an apartment building, if it was a nonprofit, they paid nothing to have that done.
In the central business district, yes.
So my question is, as a longtime board member at DDS, at Developmental and Disability Services, two years ago or so, we were required to replace our curbing before you paved Walnut Street, 198 feet. As a nonprofit, it cost us $10,000 to do that. Can we get reimbursed by, by you from some of this money that we spent to do that project? It seems everybody else is getting it from nonprofits.
Obviously, we can't afford to pay for everyone's curb and sidewalk in the city. I would love for that to happen.
Can I get a portion of it back? And can I?
No, this was a special project on Cumberland Street from Fourth to 12th. It's a specific project just for that. There are people.
Nonprofits.
Because they were fortunate enough to be in the project area of the streets.
Money that you got to, for, for a nonprofit that spent the money that you required for us to do this.
I mean, you could have applied for a grant.
Okay, good.
But not for a concrete.
Oh, okay, so it was, it came in through, it came in through a different avenue, basically? Correct, I remember that. Okay, great, well, at least that's a portion of, of what it cost to, you know, get, to get that project done.
$80,000, that's a lot. Yeah.
You know, finally, I, I will, I will say, Chairman, you know, I do feel, I think that Mike and the Rescue, I think they entered into an agreement with the city, that they have a signed document that's signed by the mayor, and I think somewhere along, you should, you keep shaking your head, no, but.
They don't, but they took that.
Well, I, I don't know, but it's, I'm saying, as someone that listened to your whole presentation tonight, it sounds like Mike has a signed document signed by the city, and that because it wasn't signed by a third-person party, that now the city wants to incorporate new language before issuing this check. I'm sure it's all going to be worked out, and I'm very pleased that Donna and the mayor and Mike are going to get together, and I'm sure that it can get worked out.
I, I hope it does.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Darrell. Any other questions from city residents? Laura?
I was going to talk to Chad about that. Yeah, well, I was going to talk to Chad about it. It does, it, I was shocked, kind of, when I saw it. Yeah, looks pretty bad.
Jerry Kalanuski, 412 Wyman Street, here in the city. I've got a couple of comments and a, one or two questions. Forgive me for just a second here. The mayor or Chad, I'm not sure who I've got to address here, this is a recycling question. I was just out at the recycling center last week doing my monthly chores, and I noticed that there was a sign up on the cardboard container. These are all softball questions based on what I've been listening to here, so I hope it's an easy one. Was it Bruce or Brian who works out there? George? George had said that the only thing that you put in the cardboard is corrugated cardboard. Quite a bit of our recycling at our house comes out of cardboard boxes, cereal boxes, you know, things that are, are cardboard, they're just not corrugated cardboard. Is there a reason why they're not collecting that? Is there a reason why they're not?
We've never collected that. It's always been corrugated cardboard, and we've always had a problem with contamination, but that's what the market only wants, corrugated cardboard. They do not take, like, cereal box-type cardboard.
Okay, but.
Or pizza boxes.
But in Pennsylvania, that isn't acceptable recycling material. So is there some way you can find a server or contractor that would accept that? Because I'm sure that's quite a bit of bulk. We've got a lot of trash and garbage because the city is unable to enforce the recycling laws. I see in my neighbors' bags all the time, they're sending recycling to the landfill. It's mandatory in the city, but the city's not enforcing that mandatory law. So I guess my question is.
Well, we do, but we probably just can't get to every single one that's in violation, but if you report it to us, our recycling coordinator will go out and.
Mayor, I've been reporting things to the city for the last 15 years that, that never get resolved, ever.
I think some of them do.
Well, some might have been resolved, but not all of them do. I'll, I'll leave that comment at that.
Okay.
The recent utility work on Wyman Street, where the UGI went through and put in new gas laterals from, and a new main, from the new main to the homes, it's a patchwork of trenches right now. What's the plan for paving Wyman Street?
So I'm working. Right now. When they're done. When they're done. Wyman Street. Press. Guy is. Happened. October. Hillford Street. Lincoln Avenue, all the way out to Seven. Those are sure. I'm hoping it's going to go this year, but I don't know. Possibly early next year.
Thank you.
But I am working all those things. Utility companies. Getting a better. Inspection. Area that I don't like. A little bit stricter than they've had. They've had.
Thank you. Is, is Wyman Street going to be milled or just topped? Because I only have four inches of reveal right now, and in the wintertime, it never gets sun, so when it rains or gets, gets a quick thaw after a freeze, my basement gets flooded. So is it, as I said, is it going to be milled or just topped? Thank you.
I'll see if I can get it.
I appreciate that. And, and the last comment I'd like to make, I'm following up on Darrell's. I'm a member of the shade tree commission, I have been for almost 20 years. As a resident, I'm also responsible for my own sidewalk. I just had to pay $6,000 to put my sidewalk in. I don't think I can get a grant, can I? I'm pretty sure I can't. The point I'm getting to is, all these businesses and homeowners and property owners are getting a free ride, for the, for a lot of it, on concrete and on shade trees. We used to have a lot of trees out here, and I'm on the shade tree commission. We were consulted, we walked through with stackback engineering, we agreed with what had to be removed, but because I'm on the shade tree commission and all these property owners are getting free shade trees, was there ever any attempt by the city or anybody to ask property owners to give some kind of a contribution to the city and the shade tree commission, to have an ongoing fund for future trees around the city, to help, to have them pay for some of what they're getting for free, pay it forward, so to speak, with more shade trees for the city? That's just a suggestion. If that was done, I'd appreciate that it might be done in the future. Just contact the home property owners and say, hey, you guys are getting all these trees for free, can you contribute to a fund for the city that would go on in perpetuity to help other residents in the city if they do desire or need to get shade trees? Because I know a lot of them do. We're having a lot of problems with people just maintaining the trees, and it's always a fight with, with some property owners. Some are very agreeable, and some are just telling us to take a flying leap, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Sure, we can ask them that.
All right. Are there any other questions from city residents tonight? Mr. Gates?
Craig Gates, 47 Berwin Park. No questions. On a lighter note, this, the Community Lebanon Association, we had a hugely successful car show last Sunday, and for those of you stopped out, thank you. We actually ran out of room, we closed registration right around 1:00, and we don't know where we would put any more cars. So, thank you for the city, the county for their cooperation. Our next event is out at Coleman's Park, it's the music festival, it'll be September 16th, which is a Saturday from 1:00 to 7:00. We have five bands, and it's the kickoff of the libations tour of Lebanon Valley, so stop out Saturday, September 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any other questions from city residents?
Good question. My name is Vicki Kreiser. The clock.
And your address, Vicki?
North Cornwall Commons.
Are you in the city?
No, but I just want to know what's going to happen with the clock.
What clock?
Out in front of the bail place.
Okay.
So, that clock, that clock was originally, I believe, put up by, I believe, Dolphin Deposit when there was a bank there.
First National.
First National, thank you. And.
Good question. My name is Vicki Kreiser. The clock.
And your address, Vicki?
North Cornwall Commons.
Are you in the city?
No, but I just want to know what's going to happen with the clock.
What clock?
Out in front of the bail place.
Okay.
So that clock, that clock was originally, I believe, put up by, I believe, Dolphin Deposit when there was a bank there.
First National.
First National. Thank you. And new owners have acquired it since that time. And over the years, I know CLA was interested in fixing the clock, and they reached out to the owners, and they did not get back to them. Over time, that clock deteriorated. When the mason went through to take it down, we had sent out several letters, emails, and tried to make phone calls to the owners to talk to them about the clock. And as a last resort, we told them to remove it, and they never reached, they never returned a call or an email or responded to our letters. So when the mason went through, he realized that when he was taking it down, it was so deteriorated, it just kind of fell apart. And there were no internal workings. So all was left was the, like, the head of the clock.
Okay.
And the mason has that.
And yes, as of September 29th, I will be a city resident.
Welcome.
And Donna, I want to let you know, we had mail issues, too, with the post office. Going in did not help. I have a friend who works in there and who fixed it completely for me. So if you're interested in her information, I can give it to you because I think that would probably be your best way of getting things fixed.
I appreciate that. I'll see you after the meeting. Thank you.
Darrell?
Just a question for the mayor concerning the clock. Can you use some of your money? Why are you?
So, it wasn't something that was discussed. It was not a part of the design. There's a clock behind the market. There are digital clocks at the Arts Council, at, I believe there's still one at the, one at Seventh and Willow, and one digital at, why can't I think of them? The rental place. Is it still there? That one might not be there. So we have several clocks. So it wasn't something that we, you know, there was discussion, well, could you put it on the northwest corner of Ninth and Cumberland? Well, that's where the Christmas tree goes. And it really wouldn't look right where the pergola is. So they're just really, and it would have to be the property owner, it really would be there. It's our right of way, but they would really be the ones to own and maintain it unless there was some sort of an agreement with the city. I just don't know that we want to take on the maintenance of a clock.
Are you going to try and do something with the head of it?
I don't know. I don't know what the.
Any other questions this evening? Mikey, I think you.
Just a historical question concerning the bell that has been removed from the front of the Historical Society. As a past resident of many years and current active president in the fire company, I'm just curious if there's plans to remove that from storage at any said time and replace it back on a prominent display?
I think the plan is to have that in, back in place in two weeks.
Awesome.
Yeah. It's being stored currently at the old city garage at Seventh and Oak. But that's the plan.
Cool. Thank you.
And to be centered between the two lower windows on a riser.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you, Richard.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions this evening? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned?